I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone. Haven't had a meeting in a little while, so it's nice to get everybody back in business here. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz? Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Marisak?
Here.
And trustee Bund.
Here.
All right, do have a quorum this evening. Moving on to public participation, the first one is the amendment to the annexation agreement for Montgomery Place Apartments. This is the public hearing that we continued from November 27th and December 11th. I don't want to assume that all of you are not here for that, so if there's anybody here that would like to speak on that public hearing, I guess I already opened the public hearing, but now would be your time to address the board on that topic. We will be very likely voting on that this evening. All right, hearing. All right, I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll move on to item B, which is a lot more fun, recognition of the Festival of Trees winners. You want me to do this? Okay. So I'll come up here and we'll announce these. So I can't stress enough to the folks that are in this room how much we appreciate helping decorate Village Hall each year. I don't know if any, if you've all had a chance to come up and look at these, every year they just kind of keep getting better and more creative. If you didn't see the Fox Metro one, you should have. But it wasn't one of the winners, certainly didn't get the votes. So with that, I'd like to award third place to Cub Scout PAC 347. And you can stay for the whole meeting, but you certainly don't have to, we won't be offended, okay? Move on to, and thank you again for, no, yes, you have to stay for the whole meeting. All right, with that, we'll move on to public comments, which is item C. Two-minute opportunity, any member of the public can address the board on any topic. Oh, I saw Lisa stand up, I thought maybe she was coming down to a, you're okay, yeah. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item D, which is the swearing-in of the new police officer. I'll ask Chief Myers to give the introduction.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our newest officer, Tomas Sobirai. That's a little tricky, so welcome. Tomas graduated from Oswego East in 2012. He went to Wabasi Community College and graduated with his associate's degree in 2014, and proceeded to Aurora University and received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice in 2016. So tonight, in the audience, is his mother, Margaret, and his brothers Nate and Adam Jr., and his father was unable to attend. So please welcome Tomas.
Raise your red hand if you'd like to. Aye, state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of my ability.
program as we speak. One other thing, Tomas passed his state certification, so he is technically certified police officer, so that's good.
Welcome. Tomas. Again, you don't have to stick around for the whole meeting, but you certainly can if you're inclined for something to do. All right, I'll move on to item E, which is Kyle Genix, Genix, 2854 Trune Drive, regarding a new church.
Congratulations on pronouncing my last name correctly. Genix with a hard G, you got it. Hey, thanks for having me here tonight, it's a pleasure to meet with you. Personally, I just want to take a moment to let you know how much I praise God and thank you for your work as leaders in our community. My family is very excited about Montgomery, from our residence, to our retail, to our local school, which has all been influenced in large part by your sacrifice and service as our leaders. I pray that God gives you wisdom, that you'll understand what's right, that he'll give you courage, that you would stand under what is right, and strength to persevere. I know firsthand that with much authority comes much responsibility, and also much criticism, so I stand beside you. Practically, you know that we live in brokenness. Individually, we have broken bodies, hearts, minds, and souls. Collectively, we experience cultural, financial, governmental, legal, marital, parental, political, relational, sexual, social, and vocational brokenness. But we hope to point individuals, couples, families, and our community to healing, to help, and to hope in Jesus. So pastorally, as we have grown to love this community and the greater neighborhood, God has called us to invest our manpower, our minutes, and our money into planting a church in Montgomery, for Montgomery, to make mature and multiply disciples of Jesus for the glory of God, the good of all people in our community, and our own growth in learning, living, and loving like Jesus. The good news is that God loves us in, through, and in spite of our brokenness, which is why he sent Jesus, that he would live a perfect life that we can't live, to die the death we deserve to die, to rise to new life for our salvation. He rules and reigns over all people, places, and things, even our brokenness, and he reconciles us into relationship with himself and one another when we turn from our brokenness and trust him to rescue and redeem us. So professionally, I'm asking for your favor, that's why I'm here tonight, to ask for your encouragement, for your partnership, for your support. What I've handed you tonight is called a prospectus. I know that isn't foreign to many of you who are familiar with writing up proposals or plans. If you want to start at the beginning, I'll quickly leaf you through it and then leave it with you tonight. Pages one and two, you'll see our context. You know Montgomery well, that in 2000, this was a town of about 5,000 people with seven churches. Today, this is a town of about 20,000, there are still only seven churches. Something went wrong. If a town quadruples, and the number of churches stays the same, and the number of churches does not grow with the growth, you'll see there on the map, on the bottom left side of page two, there's a two-and-a-half mile radius with approximately 8,000 homes and 26,000 people and zero gatherings of a local church. That's kind of our target context, if you will. On pages five and six, you'll see our cause. We believe that God is a missionary God, that the Father sends the Son, the Father and Son send the Spirit, and together the Father, the Son, and the Spirit send the church. So we hope to accomplish this cause through gatherings and groups. Pages eight and nine, you'll see our values. They're straight out of the Bible, straight from God's good news, the gospel. Page 12, you'll see a calendar, that we're in the second of five stages, that we hope to continue to work through this calendar year and on. Pages 14 through 16, you'll see the coworkers, that's a picture of my family, you can tell that they look much better than I do. That's a bit of our story and my contact information. Pages 17 through 19, help you get a better picture of the cost, the manpower, the minutes, and the money that will be needed in order to pull this off. Page 21 is where I would ask you individually, and even collectively, to consider what it might look for you to be a contributor in giving, and praying, and recommending people that we should talk to, and in serving. Finally, pages 23 through 25 are our confessions, and you'll see that they're in line with Orthodox Christianity, that we aren't crazy, all right? We aren't heretics. Finally, the last thing I would point you to is at the very end, there are some confirmations from our current pastor, my church planting coach, and my mentor. So if you can't trust me, you can trust them. And ultimately, we want you to know that we want to open our Bibles to learn Jesus, we want to open our lives to love like Jesus. We really want to narrow our focus to this circle, deepen our impact, literally love our literal neighbors, and bring the kingdom of God to Montgomery as it is in heaven. I'd be happy to follow up with you through email, send you a link to our website, give you a digital copy of this prospectus. I don't know if this is the appropriate context, but if you have any feedback, or you would like me to speak to any concerns or questions, I would be happy to do that, all right?
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions?
I'd like to stay in touch. Do you have information about service times or locations?
Yeah, right now, all of that will be in the book and then on the website. Right now, I guess you could say this is somewhat like when a woman finds out she's pregnant, we're in the developmental stage. The birthing stage, I guess you could say, is hoping for this fall, the weekend after Labor Day. We hope to be officially and formally launched, meeting in a public location.
That's the good stuff.
Yeah, it's a lot like a farmer, tilling ground, planting seed, taking root, bearing fruit, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Of course, Doug knows literally everybody. Good work. Thanks for coming. All right, with that, we'll move on to the heavy lifting. The consent agenda this evening is, I'll read the items, entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the village board meeting from December 11th, building report for December of 2017, building report summary for 2017, the accounts receivable report for December, accounts payable through December 22nd, accounts payable through January 3rd, cancellation of the January 16th committee, the whole, and then ordinance 1795 amending the village code, a reduction of the Class G liquor licenses, this is waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bund?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Yes.
McCarries 5-0, thank you. Under items for separate action, the first one we have is Resolution 2018-001, adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment. With that, I'll turn it over to attorney Julian for summary.
Yep. All right, thank you. This item is an update that is required by new state legislation, which requires that all villages and public bodies have a sexual harassment policy that is adopted by ordinance of resolution. Of course, the village already had a sexual harassment policy in place, however, based on the state statutory language, there was just a few minor things that weren't included in it, which most significantly was just cross-referencing to state statutes and to remedies that people could seek, for example, like the EEOC or IDHR, it was supposed to be explicitly named in the text of the policy. So we just went ahead and made those very minor updates, and that's what's in front of you tonight. So substantively, there's no changes, and the policy was already in compliance.
Does our employee handbook have to be updated to reflect the ordinance, then, the changes that were in the ordinance, or?
The ordinance is actually just that part of the employee handbook that it crosses, is making the update into the handbook, so that'll get incorporated there, and so that's the exact text that is part of the ordinance is in the, is pulled directly from the handbook.
Okay, thank you.
How long has our policy been in place, do you know?
I'm not sure offhand, I believe it was updated fairly recently. I don't, Justin, did you work on that?
The policy was updated in 2016, so.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Bund?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And trustee Marisak?
Yes.
McCarries 5-0. Moving on to item B, thank you, by the way. We have ordinance 1793 authorizing the execution of Sixth Amendment to the Annexation Agreement of LaSalle Bank National Association, successor trustee to American National Bank and Trust Company of Chicago. This is for Montgomery Place Apartments, and this is waiver first, passage on the second. With that, I'll turn it over to, all right, our attorney.
All right, thank you again. If you will recall, at the last board meeting, there was a draft that was provided, but there were some essential terms that were missing with placeholders. So what this draft does, it goes ahead and updates, most significantly was the land cash section was missing, so all those blanks are filled in, which provides the developer with a 30% credit for their private amenities, which is contemplated already by the village's ordinance, and then establishes that the village will be getting a land donation in which it can build trails and paths. There's also a memorandum that was included in the packet per the board's request, that kind of summarizes the history of the annexation amendments. The memorandum also outlines the major changes or what is going to be in this particular agreement. And just to refresh everybody's memory, this one is a little bit different in that it is replacing the five prior versions, so this agreement will govern this property only. So the prior agreements will remain in effect for the other parcels, but as far as this parcel goes, it'll just be this agreement, which is a lot easier to administer moving forward. With that, I can entertain any questions that anyone would have, and I would like to remind everybody that it is a supermajority vote, which requires five. The village president can vote, but is not required to.
I have a couple of questions, just quick questions. Rich, this is, Park District is on board with this, this is as per the discussion we had earlier this week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Secondly, which fire protection district is this? Is this Montgomery?
Oswego.
Oswego, and then, refresh my memory, their turning radiuses and all that, everything is good?
It's been met, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And trustee Bund?
Yes.
McCarries 5-0, thank you. And I do want to say, thank you to staff for all the hard work that goes into something like this. This is really a deal, I think that's going to bring good things for the village of Montgomery, a quality complex in our village, but also includes conversations with the Park District, the Fire District, the current property owner, the, and the purchaser. And so I think it's a good thing, and staff works hard on making sure that deals like this happen in a very proactive way, and so I really do appreciate that. All right, moving on to item C, we have ordinance 1794 authorizing the execution of a Second Amendment to the Annexation Agreement with Huntington Chase Limited Partnership in Kimball Hill. This is Huntington and Chase subdivision, this is the second reading, and back to you.
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is an amendment to an annexation agreement. This one is a little bit different in that this annexation amendment supplements the original amendment, so it doesn't replace it in its entirety, it's just a supplement to what was in the original. However, as everyone knows, a lot of the conditions of the original were met prior to, you know, Kimball Hill going bankrupt and the development stopping. So this is just in order to enable new developers to come in and develop those lots. Specifically, it acknowledges which obligations have been met, and then which obligations still remain with regard to the public improvements. There was very few things that had to be pulled out from it, and those were identified in the memorandum, but specifically, you know, identified what remaining fees and donations there were, if any, identified what remaining public improvements there were, and acknowledged which ones had been completed. This draft had been contained in the last packet and has not changed since the last reading by the board. So again, I think with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Just a, I see Evan out in the audience. I haven't had a chance to talk to you, I know that you had reached out to staff concerning some questions. Do you have anything to say, or are you okay with this? And he's the HOA president for Huntington Chase.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think the only question I have to ask, conclusion of the settlement.
Evan, you want to?
Can you come down? That way we get you on record, please.
My apologies for not speaking at the public conference.
No worries.
Yeah, so Evan Seeling, president of the HOA for Huntington Chase, hi, thank you. Obviously, this has been a long time ongoing issue. The only concern that I had, I was very pleased to see that we were trying to move forward with TRG to allow them to continue the development of our properties. We have 47 empty lots that have been sitting there since 2007, waiting to be built on, and the ongoing bond issue has been out there a long time. The only lack of clarity that I had, and here tonight for our HOA, was to ask, with that ongoing punch list set of items, this annexation amendment speaks to responsibility for the parkway trees and the sidewalks that the builder or TRG would be, that are taking responsibility for. But I just remember at the end of the settlement that there was still several hundred thousand dollars of punch list items that were listed as being outstanding beyond, there was about $980,000 worth of punch list items. We settled for 750. We fixed the roads at that point. I'm just curious about, what are the other punch list items that are not addressed in this annexation agreement, amendment, and the difference between what was settled for the roads? And most importantly, there wasn't any assurance there that our homeowners would have to foot any of the bill if we came up with, if those punch list items do magically appear again after the fact. So I saw that there was very specific statements to, you know, telling the builder, TRG, or TRG, the builders in the village, agreeing what was left on the very specific stated ones, but I've never seen a fully completed punch list showing all those other outstanding items that were a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of items, and just looking for some type of assurance for our homeowners that we're not going to be footing some of that bill, especially when there was excess money from that settlement that was not used on the roads, and we've never gotten an accounting of where that money was being used for, whether it was being saved to actually use towards any of the punch list items.
Excellent question.
I might be able to partially answer that question. There are still some sidewalks that I believe would have to go in, but there's been money set aside from the bond settlement for that completion, so to my knowledge, there would be no items that would be the responsibility of the HOA to complete. There are funds set aside for the remaining items on the punch list, and then any of their obligations are outlined in the amendment for future developers of the lots for improvements that would technically be within the right of way.
So the public improvements that have been installed, we've accepted all of that at this point, to where if there was?
Some of them may still be under a maintenance period, but they have been completed to the specs that were for the original development, so.
Yeah, and so if there was any issues with, let's say, some curbing or sidewalk, or I don't know what the specifics of that were, we've accepted those, we own those, the village, and it'd be our responsibility in the future to fix those.
Correct.
Okay. All right, you want to?
Thank you.
All right, thanks Evan. Any other questions from the board, for staff on the issue?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And trustee Bund?
Yes.
McCarries 5-0, thank you. All right, moving on to ordinance, item D, which is ordinance 1796, approving the Lakewood Creek Special Assessment Bond refunding. This is waiver first, passage on the second reading. It'd be a lot of fun just to see if she could handle all of the issues tonight, but we'll go ahead and move it on to Director Finance, Justin Mannmorn.
Thank you, President Rowley. The board discussed refunding the Series 2006 Lakewood Creek Special Assessment Bonds at the November 27th board meeting. The approval of this ordinance authorizes the issuance of the Series 2018 bonds, and will allow staff to move forward with a sale at a later date. We did discuss savings at the last meeting. Those total savings may not be the exact same as they were previously, but they will be determined at the date of sale. So if there are any questions, I can answer those at this time. We also have a representative from Spear here, so if there are any additional questions about the bonds, either one of us can answer them.
And people have been sort of asking for this, well, I guess, does this take this off their property tax bill?
Well, they'd like to add it to the tax.
Oh, that's right, so it's not a separate bill. I get you, it just saves them money.
Reduce the amount they are paying.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I noticed in here that it says that the $9,915,000 is currently callable?
Yes, it is.
And that's pretty standard?
When bonds are issued, typically what happens is the first, let's say, eight to 10 years, those bonds will not be callable, they cannot be refunded, if you will. But what happens now is, we're going to put money, this 2018 bonds, we're going to put money into an account, and those monies are going to go directly to pay the bonds on March 1st when they're due, and then all of the other bonds that are due after March 1st of 18 will then be called on the same day and be paid at the same time, so.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
One real quick, I appreciate you getting, how many people have paid it completely? And I took it that it was a lot more than 58, but you said there's only 58, and I must have talked to all 58, because everybody was saying how they're paying it off in advance, and, and thank you, because it isn't as many as I thought. I thought more was there, so, appreciate it.
Yeah, I lived there, and I'm with you, Denny, I'd swear every person I talked to, oh yeah, we paid that off, oh, I paid that off. No, I thought about paying it off, but I haven't paid it off. And then when I saw the number of 58, I think, wow. I talked to all 58 of those same people.
Go ahead, Stan, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem at all. So I- So I, I moved the vote, and we have a second, so.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And Nick Currie's. All right, no items for discussion. Any new or unfinished business? It's been a few weeks. I'm sure somebody had something. Nothing.
Go Tide.
Go Georgia.
Did we, we haven't met since the holiday lighting decorations. That was a very exciting event. We had substantially more entries this year. We had some excellent ones. We had really good news coverage of it and a lot of good comments. I think we might have depleted our, we did. We had to print more signs. And we had business participation, which is especially gratifying.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was going out, and again, I mentioned it prior to, the going out and judging those that night. And this was really unique, because there was a lot of new faces down in the community room downstairs to go out and judge.
We had 10 teams of judges.
Yeah, it was.
Stan.
That's awesome.
How many, how many judges?
We had 10 teams of judges.
Oh, my goodness.
The most ever, yeah. It actually looked like a training room, and we got everybody oriented.
Awesome. One thing I just wanted to mention, by the way, thank you for spearheading that. It really kind of is one of those things that we can do at very low cost. It really creates a lot of goodwill in the community, and, and people really enjoy getting recognized for their efforts and that, so. One thing that I did want to mention today, I was kind of surprised that this week, or last week, I guess, when I got an email from the American Public Works Association Fox Valley Branch, not to get the email, but because of what was on the email, was that Mark Wolfe from our Public Works Department is going to be recognized an award of merit tomorrow at their annual gathering for his work in the Public Works Department, so I just want to give him a shout out this evening. Works hard on behalf of the residents here, and certainly makes me proud as a resident and, and as an elected official in the community, the work that he's doing, and being recognized. And also, any EEI employees being recognized for a project outside of Montgomery, I think, probably. Oh, that's right. The, the Donald Stone Award for Excellence in Education, Brad Sanderson. So, trying to give credit where it's due. But anyway, I just want to thank Mark for the work he does for us.
I just want to say to Todd, I thank you for all the water main breaks. I guess we had five in Boulder Hill around Christmas. We had one in down here off of Ashland, and then my neighbor had one who called my house Saturday night and wanted to know why I shouldn't have water, but they fixed them all right away, and I know, you look in Chicago, and those, those are busting up and flooding buildings and everything, and I'm just glad these are all done, and I appreciate all your guys' hard work on those, especially around Christmas.
And in that cold, too.
And if you can, I don't know if you can publicly state, but the amount of overtime that we used, over, mind you, over the holidays and minus weather?
In the past two weeks, 14 individuals in Public Works worked a collective 547 hours of overtime. So that's about 39 on average per person, not including exempt employees and some contract help that had to be brought in at times. So it was a challenging week, this, pretty much from January 29th, I'm sorry, December 29th until early Sunday morning, it's been a rough, rough go. Even last night and this morning was something we're a little bit more familiar with dealing with, but again, guys were out of bed and working.
Yeah, and that's something that maybe we don't call enough attention to, is that the villages, you know, residents in Montgomery with plowing, or with their streets, or with water main breaks, very sensitive to those issues, and so holidays with your family have to be put on hold, and you're out in the cold working on behalf of the residents. And it does, I mean, it, it comes with a price tag that, that people, I think, need to be aware of. That's why I wanted to highlight that, so. Thank you, and thank all of them. All right, before anybody else can come up with anything else, we'll move on. Future meetings, certification meeting has been canceled, committee of the whole meeting is canceled. We'll meet back here two weeks from tonight. Village Board meeting on January 22nd. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.